I'd like to call to order the Dartmouth Select Board meeting of May 23. And pursuant to Mass GL Chapter 38, Section 21 law, we will go into executive session. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And executive session will be back hopefully close to 6:30 with our open meeting. Thank you.
Remain standing.
Aye, for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Stand for nation.
For individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing to honor our veterans, both past and present, and our health workers doing their job for us. Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, thanks everybody for coming. We are gonna start off with, sign the warrant, is done.
Mr. Chairman, can we take one item out of order?
Of course.
Can we ask Mr. Lance, take the matter with Mr. Lance first because we know he had, I know he has another engagement in the middle of right now, so I want to take care of him. So we can get him on his way.
I don't mind, I don't want to disrupt the, no?
No problem. Nobody's here for Menstar anyway, so.
There's a lady right back there.
Finally!
Okay.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen for seeing me again and thank you for unanimously approving.
You are?
Sorry, Peter Lance, and I've got the Flag Project on Font's Corner Road. It's been a lot more work than I anticipated, it's kept me up many nights, but we're finally there. So, basically looking for approval to have the flags up for the entirety of Memorial Day weekend and 4th of July weekend. They both happen to fall, Memorial Day on a Monday and the 4th of July on a Monday. So, this is not my, you know, doing, but everybody that has helped me volunteer or talked about the project said that they would like to have the flags up for the entire weekend. My only concern with that was flag protocol and making sure that the flags were illuminated properly. Everybody that I've spoken to, veterans, agents, lots of other veterans, say that the streetlights and just the general lights along Font's Corner Road is sufficient. So, with your blessing, I'd like to put the flags up Saturday morning, this coming Saturday morning, for the entirety of the weekend, as well as Saturday morning for the 4th of July weekend.
Make a motion to approve, gladly approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Second, sir.
Hang on, before we vote, I'd like to get a confirmation from Veterans Agent that approval of the protocol is satisfied.
I spoke to Matt and he did approve that.
He's here.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'd like to hear from him.
Sure, oh absolutely.
Don't take any offense.
Actually, I didn't even think to come before you, I was just thinking, once everybody said, "You gotta do it, you gotta do it," I was just gonna do it, and Matt said, "You might want to go and ask the Select Board, so."
Would you mind coming forward, Matt? Thank you.
So I spoke with the Advisory Board, per request, and their opinion was that the Route 6 area illumination should be sufficient for the flags over the weekend. Protocol does state that the, are all-weather flags, just due to rain and things like that, if it's inclement, you want to take them in, so.
Thank you.
Any other issues that?
No, 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 the rules are fairly vague, you'd think they would be, you know, but they're very vague. So, illuminations is what they use in the federal regulations, so.
Thanks for coming.
Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments from anybody?
My only question is, the last time this came up, you were in need of donations, and how are you?
So, I actually, I forgot to mention this also, I mentioned many of you by name on a radio show, it's a little secret, but we pre-record our radio show, it's no longer live, it's been going for over ten years now, and I mentioned several of you and thanked you. That's gonna air this coming Sunday at 8:00 a.m. on W B S M. But, the donations, I actually didn't even ask for that many, people came to me, received three donations from individuals, and the manager at Home Depot was able to donate a lot of the materials. We still went out of pocket a decent amount, but the donations were fantastic and unexpected, so.
It's great news.
Yep. The only casualty is I broke my toe on the project, putting the bases in, but I hope to be up and running by Saturday, so.
Any other questions or comments? Are we prepared to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen, appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Peter, is that your crutch?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Oh geez.
Okay, time to move to public hearing on Eversource Conduit. We have, we do have someone here, okay.
I apologize.
Okay, would you please introduce yourself first, we do have, we do have the purpose, we do need to have a public hearing and hear the public know, but could you introduce yourself and tell your what?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jessica Elder, representing Eversource, thank you for having me this evening. Eversource is petitioning to install fifty-five feet of conduit cable under the town road under, in Horse Neck Road, going from an existing pole, two fourteen over ninety-eight, into the customer's property. Customer will be installing their own handhole and the conduit on their property.
I just have to interrupt you.
Yes.
Protocol and my lack of, we have to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Which I've just done. So, we, anything else to say about it? Complete? Okay, we have anybody in the audience who is for the project, who wants to speak? Ms. McInnis? Okay, anybody against the project who wants to speak? Okay.
Move to close the hearing.
We've closed the public hearing. The hearing is closed. We need a motion?
Motion to. Good, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion or questions?
She was speaking on the Horse Neck Road or both, in the same?
This is on.
I just heard Horse Neck Road.
Just the Horse Neck Road.
This is on Horse Neck.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, unanimous.
Okay.
Okay, the public, we're gonna, what about the other, the?
Conduit.
Shore's Acre.
Separate hearing, right, close that hearing, right, okay. That hearing's closed, thank you. Okay, time to open up the hearing on Shore Acres Road. Public hearing is open. Let's hear what about it.
Again, very, very simple, we are proposing to install forty-two feet of conduit cable under the town road, again going from an existing pole, three eighty-nine over nine, northwesterly to the customer's handhole on their property.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience who is in favor of the project, want to speak? Anybody opposed? Hearing none? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous, the public hearing is over. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for showing up.
Nice to see you.
It's a pleasure.
Okay. Overtime. Okay. The Lance family's done. One-day event, Dartmouth Cultural Council, someone here?
They may not be here.
They may not be here. Are we going to hear anything about it?
You can just vote to approve it.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, motion is approved. Next is a one-day event at the Holy Ghost Society of Horse Neck, two events. Someone here for that? You'd not make it, okay? Need to read it into the?
Is this a wedding?
Yeah, they do it every year.
Yeah, wedding on the twentieth and?
Yep.
Everybody signed off, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none, motion passes. One-day event for two events at the Holy Ghost Ground. Okay, well, here we go. Cornell Pond Committee.
Good stuff.
Please step forward and introduce yourself and?
Some people call me the mayor of Hicksville. I was never elected to that. Phil Chandler. I do chair the committee at the present time on the advisory committee. We're here to give you a status report, and hopefully you will see the benefits of our recommendations, and we can get this project moving. Behind me, I thought it was gonna be over there. These are different maps, going back into the seventeen hundreds. There's been an impoundment at Cornell Pond, and it had previous names, going back to that time period. So, we're not doing with anything new. However, we determined that the current configuration of the pond, the dam, was put in in nineteen thirty-five as a part of a CCC project, so I got this from Will Crudo. And then in nineteen seventy-five, when the Rod and Gun Club gave four acres there, which included the impoundment, to the town, and one of the requirements then that motion was that the town should have a survey done. Well, as some things fall through the cracks, that survey just got completed with Mike O'Reilly putting that forty left off, so we now have that, and... Come up in a minute, no, I got a little pointer here. Okay. And this has been the biggest thing. Oh, wait a minute. There we go. Okay.
Won't show up on the TV.
I'll stand over here. Barber Road. This is the investigation of the pond, and there are three impoundments right up near. And then there's the fourth one over here. The E S P study gave us three choices. We have been working with a lot of the town governments, and we even dumped it right on Sean's lap soon after he arrived. So, we've completed the survey, so we now have that, and there is only... Butters now are the Rod and Gun Club, the town, and DNRT, the Howland property. So, I have with me the committee members, Gloria, you know, Bancroft, and Mike Roy, and our innumerable farmer friend from North Country, so... I'm gonna sit down, like I said, at the previous town, sit down and be appreciative, right? But I'm gonna give them three minutes each. There you go.
I haven't heard Tom speak for less than three minutes in a long time, so it's the offload.
Yes, I know, can you hear me all right?
Absolutely.
Tom, you're in Hicksville, been up there fifty-seven years, know the area very well. I was a field trial judge, my father, judging dog runs up there, fox hunts, I know the territory real well. Seen the water where it comes and where it goes. You people, some new now, but some old ones, that put us all together to meet a committee and go up there and see what the hell is going on, excuse me, what the heck is going on. And it was a big mess. Nobody took care of it. The trees grew roots, uprooted the stones, moved things around, and then nobody took care of it. So when we started to clean up and got okay to do it, we put together a handful of people when we first started, "Are we ever gonna do anything?" Today, we get dozens of people, been about four times. Rotary Club, Boy Scouts, and the native people up there love what we're doing. Believe me. Yeah, they can see what's going on, they have birthday parties, they have a lot of things up there. I think we're gonna take care of them dams, it's fresh water. South end of town, salt water, the causeway is fine, they spent a lot of money repairing that. Took them years to do it. They accomplished it, but they shut the road down. Up here, don't shut it down, fix the damn thing. I think that's the thing to do. And water has an awful lot of power, believe me. Years ago, they cut trees down, they made shacks and everything, and they had sawmills and everything. So if we control the water, I have a sawmill there, I had two hundred and seventeen acres, I cut trees, I made walkways, we installed them, I donated to the town. Now I got walkways to go over the dams. It's a lot of power that's taken care of, I think it's something that we need. And when they done the first survey, they only come up with three spillways or dams, there's four. Huh, oh really, there's four, okay. Now they come up with a different idea. Well, my closing statement is this. You people assigned us, I hope we continue on and doing things good. So there's four dams, look at you, one, two, three, four, five, six. My daughter's a young girl, she works there and helps out. I wanna show her what you people are, you're our power for the town. We got the power up there with dams, with water. Continue on, help us out, thank you.
Well, thanks for having us, and congratulations to Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Gloria.
So, just real brief, I don't know, I can't do three minutes, but... Just for the benefit of Ms. Brooks too, just to give you a brief history, in twenty fourteen, the Office of Dam Safety issued an order to the town saying that you need to repair this dam and some disrepair. The town ignored the order, and then in twenty fifteen, they got slapped with a second order. So then something had to be done. So, town meeting appropriated fifty thousand dollars, and a feasibility study was done, and actually prior to that, the town hired a tie-in bound, and then they inspected the dam, and then from there, the feasibility study. So, and then we were given three choices, you know, by the state, saying either repair it, remove it, or breach it. And so, we really worked to trying to repair it if we could, but it was gonna be over a million dollars. So, fast forward, Mike O'Reilly at the time came up with an idea when speaking with different engineers, and said, "You know, you can lower the classification of it, it was considered a significant risk, a significant hazard potential dam." That comes with stipulations. And so, he was able to submit documentation to show that there really isn't that much risk if it were to fail, because there, you know, the chance of death is very slim, there aren't many houses that would be impacted. So he submitted appropriate documentation and got it reduced to the low hazard. When it got reduced to low hazard, then that order got rescinded. So we no longer, as a town, had to do anything with it. So we were all celebrating that was great. When Mike submitted that, he also submitted a management plan that the town would commit to two to three hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs. But, when they rescinded the order, the state said, "That plan isn't necessary." So again, we rejoiced. But, all of us at the time felt like, "Wait a second, this dam's only gonna continue to deteriorate, so it behooves us as a town to be able to put some money into it." At a minimum, two things. One is to clear the spillway, and as you heard tonight, there were four spillways, but there are three in a row, to clear that vegetation. Trees have grown, and of course, the wider the tree gets, the more deterioration causes. So, that at a minimum should be done, and secondly, patchwork, cement patchwork on the sides of the dam. So, that was at a minimum, was decided that the town would do. And then also, we decide at that point that we would also enhance the recreational use, and that would encompass making a trail connection to the Howland Reserve, which is what DNRT owns. There is no parking for Howland Reserve, so Cornell Pond would act as the parking, so it sounded like a win-win. We've met with DNRT several times, they're very much in favor of this as well. So, in any event, and as you heard, we've had multiple cleanups, we've had four cleanups, we did have to get a permit from Conservation, we have access to do any cleanup on the land, we can't go obviously into the water. So we've done everything we possibly can at this point. Town meeting has also, in twenty nineteen, we went back to town meeting and asked for any unused resources that had been previously appropriated, if we could utilize that to continue forward with the project of putting bridges on the spillways to create this trail. Town meeting approved it in the fall of twenty nineteen. At that time, we had thirty-five thousand dollars of unused money because a Phase Two inspection was no longer required, once they rescinded the order. We also had fifteen hundred dollars left over from the feasibility study. So we had thirty-six thousand five hundred. Since then, as you heard, we had a survey done, so that cost some money, but we still have some money in the pot. But in the meantime, our developmental, our development, I should, sorry, Director of Development had, in this past February, submitted a grant to the Mass Trails Grants Program for fifty thousand dollars that would incorporate all of the things that we would like to do, such as hire a landscaper to do the work on the actual dam itself, because as Sean told us, even though we have the manpower, we have volunteers, that it would not be wise for the town to have volunteers work on the dam, that instead, you know, for liability purposes, it should be a professional who is insured. So that comes at a cost. And so anyway, everything that we would like to do, including an educational kiosk that would highlight the vegetation, the wildlife, and the history of the site, everything that we'd like to do, new picnic tables, you name it, all got incorporated into this grant. So Cody found out today that the governor has not yet issued the award, so we don't know who's gonna be recipient. And so it'd be great if we got it, and then we can proceed forward. If not, we will look back at that thirty-six thousand five hundred, whatever's left over in that pot. But, at this point, we have done everything we possibly can. The Rotary Club came out this past Saturday, they did an incredible job in an hour and a half with all their power tools, it was great, everything looks fantastic, and then the following day, the parking lot was jam-packed, there were eight or nine cars totally being utilized, lot of fishing taking place. So, at this point, we're just waiting, but as soon as we get the, whether we win or not, I'll be calling Sean, saying, "Okay, get the landscaper out there, let's get DPW", whatever we need to do to move forward, and then we will work with, of course, Mark from Conservation to then move forward with another permit that is required. So, but keep in mind that even though the dam was, the classification was lowered, the town is due to provide another inspection in twenty twenty-seven, that's in five years. So I think it behooves us to make sure that we, you know, do our part and get the patchwork done. And also keep in mind that once that vegetation is cleared on the dam itself, then the town would have access. So someone from Parks could just jump on there anytime and just say, "Okay, let me go take a look at that first spillway or the second spillway", which now it gets hard, it's hard to go see because of the vegetation. So it's good for the town to be able to have that access to keep up with, you know, the condition of the dam as well, over time. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but we just thought we'd give you an update, especially with Ms. Brooks now on board, and also because, you know, believe this or not, let me ask you a question, do you know what year, or did I already say what year that the dam, Office of Dam Safety issued you the order? It was twenty fourteen, so we've been at this now for a while, and we're not getting any younger, so we really, really wanna get this done, so we can move on to other things in town. So, thank you.
Great work.
Thank you, I thank you for all your work.
You know, I, we have hundreds of paid, wonderful paid employees, and it runs our government, but in a true town government, the only way that really works is if people like you and your group devote their time and efforts as volunteers in town. We all are, and that's the way it works, and this is an incredibly successful story about how to make government work from the ground up. And I, and I know that I've worked with Gloria many times, and I don't wanna be the one to stop her from getting something done, because she's gonna get it done anyway.
Let me tell you, it's very challenging working with these gentlemen, because they're tough.
I can see that.
They're tough.
Demanding, demanding, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mike Roy.
Go ahead, Tom. Turn over the egg timer.
And it was told to me, and I can believe it, 'cause I seen what happens. People like the trash stuff, throw it everywhere. Eh, having a good time, throw this there, beer bottles, beer cans, everything. Put a trash can there, right? No, stop it. If it didn't find you, nine hours, ten, pick it up and throw it back on and take it with it. If there's a trash can, fills up, the wind blows, the town garbage guys don't know all there, they take it and pick it up. It's all over the damn place, food, everything. Stop putting garbage cans out there. And I think it's a big plus to keep things nice and clean and neat, and the neighbors, believe me, really enjoy it, what's been done.
Thank you very much.
Again, that's it, thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me just wrap it up. We need some money to, well... We're strongly recommending that we repair the dam, that we put bridges over the three spillways, and that we clean up the area in between, and there'll have to be some major work done there, and that also, we have the support of DNRT to tie in our land, towns land, with their property there. Once we get those pieces together, then we'll have to get a comprehensive permit from the Conservation Commission.
Mr. McDonald?
I have an idea.
Yeah?
We've done this in the past with streetlights, we've done this in the past with other things. What I'd like to see available, made, come this fall town meeting, is that we set up, and the finance guys are gonna cringe when I say this, set up a stab fund for Cornell Pond, and come October, start putting in a hundred thousand dollars a year, so that we can meet the deadline to fix the dam by twenty twenty-seven. So that way, by that time, we should have a half a million dollars in that kitty, and that way, that money can be used to fix the dam and any structure on the Cornell Pond. And I think it can be done legally, correct? Mr. Barnes? Yes.
Gloria?
Well, I appreciate that very much. At this point, the only repairs are some minor, you know, patching, and... But if the inspection in twenty twenty-seven slaps you with, "Oh no, you need to really repair this", now you're looking at one point two million plus at that point. But I think, you know, if they, if keep it at a low hazard, I don't think you're gonna run into that. I think you just need to do the minor repairs.
As you know, as a former finance committee person, that if we have the stab fund, and we no longer need the stab fund, all we need to do is vote at town meeting to rescind the stab fund and put the money back into the general fund, or put it into another stab fund somewhere else. So that can be done, it's just a, you know, little moving, so I think that would probably be the best course at this time, at least to start hedging our bets on something, and even then, the money could be used for some other things too, you know.
Well, then they could certainly hire someone...
Right.
To create those bridges over the spillways.
Right.
They can get started or something.
So, I'm going to not make a motion right now, but I'd like to see something on, in October, to that effect.
That wouldn't come through Capitol?
It can come through Capitol, but it'll be sponsored by this board.
Right.
So, I'd like to see it.
Well, if and when you're ready to do that, I think you presented to Capitol for the...
No, 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 we would make, Sean and Mr. Barnes would make the presentation on behalf of us. We're creating the stab fund, not the Cornell Pond Committee. We would establish the fund, we would ask for the...
Monies.
The monies, for it.
You could say it's in preparation...
Right.
You could say it's in preparation for the inspection, and 'cause you don't know what the results are gonna look like, but chances are, you might not need it.
I mean, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, if this, if this idea was like this, if way back when, the foresight to do this, then chances out, we'd have a better bridge in Paydeneum, we would have, you know, different things here and there, but, you know, this is something new and something, you know, that you think about, you know, everybody was says, you know, government is really reactionary, and nothing planning ahead, and this is planning ahead.
Right.
Why don't we leave it up to Mr. McGinnis, bring it to one of our meetings to put it on the table?
It could be, it could be on our table for August.
And the one thing we would appreciate, because we're not getting any younger, is some kind of maintenance plan, so that, you know, we're not out there every single year, you know, and trying to clean it up, and 'cause...
We can have that discussion with Pox and Rec.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I just wanna say a thank you to Arthur Thibodeau, who's been with the committee until a personal problem, and David Cunha has also been very helpful on this project. I just wanna let you know that.
Thank you all.
One member of the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Okay, all set? All right then. Next on the agenda is the Council on Aging Parking Lot Line Painting Donation. Who do we have here? Okay.
Good evening, Amy DePietro, Director of the Council on Aging.
Amy DePietro, Director of the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging received a very generous donation from Jackie McDonald and North Dartmouth Properties to reline the parking spaces in our parking lot. So we would like to say thank you to North Dartmouth Properties.
Good job.
Mr. McGinnis?
We received the very generous donation from North Dartmouth Properties, and we just wanted to have this publicly demonstrated, because the Council on Aging is very appreciative of these donations. Amy will work with the North Dartmouth Properties to schedule a time to have the parking lot restripped by, I don't know if they're going to do it themselves or their vendor.
Our staff will do it.
The staff will do it.
I believe the staff is planning on coming in on a Saturday.
Great.
Yes, so, thank you, we, we really appreciate it.
If it was a parking lot that needed to have striping, it'd be appreciated.
I want to say something.
I want to thank the McDonald family for their donation. It's greatly appreciated, both you and your mother. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Amy.
Thank you.
Amy.
All set? Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, Walter Ferrier requests for Bill Mosher dedication.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Walter Ferrier. I'm here in a small committee, and the Honorable Ken Vincent is with me, but the whole committee couldn't be here tonight with a short notice. But we're here to try to dedicate some type of memorial, a room, a street sign, or whatever, for William Mosher. And I don't know if you, all the board members remember Bill Mosher, but I can say that I was a selectman for 10 years, Mr. Vincent was probably 10 or more years. Bill Mosher was the face of Dartmouth. He not only was a town meeting member, he graduated in 1959 from Dartmouth High School, and unbelievably, there was four members of his graduating class that became selectmen in this town. But be that as it may, Bill went on to be a town meeting member, he was on the Housing Authority, sent a letter to the board saying that he became the Town Clerk and Treasurer, Planning Board Member, and a selectman. And I can say without hesitation that I don't think any person in this town has dedicated that much ti- time to town government. And I can say without, sometimes people think that the word politician is a, is a bad word. I don't really think so. Bill Mosher was a politician that helped the town of Dartmouth to the nth degree. He devoted his life and his family was in, in Dartmouth. He was a lifelong resident of Dartmouth. And as I said, I don't think there's anybody, and I've been around town government as a participant, as a watching town government, I don't think I can remember anybody that spent that much time and that many boards, and they were so successful, and everybody loved them. And when you're a politician, I can say, people hate you and they love you. Bill Mosher was, I don't think anybody hated him. He just did his job, did it in a professional way, and benefited the town of Dartmouth. And that's why we're here to try to put something together, so that his memory will be lasting to the town of Dartmouth.
That's a great idea.
We're here for some guidance. I don't know, I, I walked around here, and I under, I see John Marlin, the Memorial Meeting Room. I worked with John Marlin, great man. There are a lot of great people. Roger Tugus I worked with, and I understand we have a street named after him.
No, the circle of friends.
Right, the circle, but.
Right.
I just think it's time.
Mr. Mickelson?
Mr. Ferrier, very, very nice presentation, and this is well worth our, our response. I, I think maybe you have a committee, and maybe we could, between your committee and the board, we can come up with something that's valuable to the man's reputation and what he stood for and stands for to this day for the town of Dartmouth. And I, you, you, if you ever met the man, or you hadn't met, met the man, he, he left an impression always on you. He left a wonderful impression, that he was the, the real deal, a man's man in my world.
We're just looking for some guidance to figure out where we're going to go.
Mr. Vincent?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
After Walter asked me about being on the committee for Bill, and as you know, Bill was in my graduating class, and it was the class of 59 that had four people on it that was lucky enough to serve on the Board of Selectmen, and that was David Ferrier, Natalie Dias, Bill, and myself. And I had the opportunity to call Mary, Bill's wife, and told her what the town was thinking of doing. In all honesty, her exact words were these. You know, Bill loved this town, he doesn't like elaborate things, something small, something that's going to make him happy, but we don't want to go and make it elaborate. Simple, something small and simple. And I admired her for that, and I said that I would pass that on to the board, that that's all he's looking for, all she's looking for, the family's looking for, something small and something simple. And I can say, and to reiterate what Mr. Ferrier said, one of the greatest guys that ever served this town. He knew this town. Anything you want to know about the history of this town, you'd have to ask Bill. He was a great friend, and I miss him tremendously. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Great ideas.
So, when Attorney Ferrier first sent me an email regarding this, I said this was a no-brainer. It's something that, you know, I, I think is long overdue. Bill was the first Town Clerk and Treasurer in this building when we moved here, and he set this, you know, he set the standard for others to follow. And so after a while, I was thinking about what, what is the best way to honor Bill? And I said, if it's a meeting room, I don't think that's, that's not Bill. So I had made a suggestion that, like an outdoor sitting area in front of Town Hall with a bench and, and some kind of an area, because there's one thing, one thing about that is when you were able to get Bill to talk about the town, he loved to talk about the town, and he gave you history, and you learn from that history. And what better way to, to do that than to have an area of, you can call it contemplation or discussion, or something, you know, but he was also, he was also personnel-driven. You know, he, he always, people who worked with him, people who worked in other offices always had, he was always discussion with them. And I think, I think a sitting area in front of Town Hall would be perfect, especially for during, during the summertime, during the, the good weather, the employees can, if they take a, you know, a break, this is something that they can go to. Maybe something like that in, in some manner in this building, because you really can't... I, I would think that looking at where rooms are, you know, I mean, the first room that was ever claimed was the Charles Lawrence Room, the meeting room for Charlie Lawrence. And the reason behind that was, is Charlie Lawrence was the guy who's made the suggestion that the pool school become, you know, the Town, Town Hall. And then after that was this room with John Marlin and, and whatnot. So maybe something similar to that area could, could be in front of the building on the Town Clerk's side, you know, so that it's more akin to where he was. You know, so something suggesting like that. But that's something, you know, the committee can chew on.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, another thing, maybe we can ask his wife if there is anything special that, that really, really was special to Bill, and he talked about, you know, on and on and on. It was, it, just to get some impact that way, and I love your idea, but we can go on and maybe find, that might end up that way. But I'd like to honor him for what he stood for and what was so very important in his life for the town. So maybe.
I would, oh, Ms. Brooks, go ahead.
I, I think what both Mr. Ferrier and Mr. Vincent have expressed tonight, and I'm sitting here thinking that, you know, we're losing the legacy of Dartmouth, the folks that have put together, and we've looked at kiosses that, to maintain areas of the town, but I think we need to look at some oral history before we've totally lost the folks that served on towns and committees, longtime employees, and start creating an oral history that captures what everyone has done. So I think we need to, to look at that.
In your answer to Mr. Mickelson, again, in speaking to Mary, she did said one thing, that Bill would want something simple, not.
Right, right. I understand that, I heard you say that, right.
And I, again, I, I mentioned to Mr. Ferrier that, in today at the coffee shop, Mr. Pimental indicated an interest at Pimental that he'd like to serve on this committee, too, but I don't know, you know, where the cutoff is going to be. That's not my juv- just one.
The only thing I would add, Sean, I, I had many conversations with Bill, and I actually sat on the bench talking to him back and forth, and this is, maybe it's trivial, but out in front, it's kind of a noisy, you know, place. Maybe there's another place, either in the back, something that people will actually take a break at lunchtime and actually use and sit in a little more private. I don't know the answer to that.
You just have to be careful, because once you start going outside, and this parking lot belongs to the school.
I understand, but I just, something could actually be used, so, but I, I think that, I don't know how we want to proceed. Mr. McGinnis, a suggestion?
If Mr. Ferrier has some recommendations, he can certainly pass them along. We'll start going over some options here. It's interesting, you brought that up. We, there used to be an area down in the parking lot, a grassy area, that had some tables, picnic tables there, and we just had conversations last week about replacing those tables, so it might be a good opportunity to, to replace the table, because the staff did meet outside there and eat, and eat, so it was a congregation spot, so we could certainly make that an area that would be dedicated to Mr. Mosher.
Is the board going to submit some more names to us, that maybe some of the people watching may submit that? Because retired Chief Zale, who couldn't be here, his son just cut his doctorate, so he had to go to New Jersey, wants to serve on that committee also.
Yeah, they were best friends.
Oh, good.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'll take care of the committee. I would just like the intercourse here, that we're now talking to the Select Board and getting your input to say, what can we do to honor him? I mean, we could put plaques up on the wall or whatever it is, but if you give us some suggestions, and, and honoring his family's wishes, if it's simple but nice, you know.
We may be on to something functional here that would really be used. And I would suggest, myself, that you, your group can maybe talk a little bit more about it, now that you've talked to us, and then funnel your suggestions or comments to Mr. McGinnis, and then we'll make it happen. This doesn't have to be a long-drawn-out affair, but it sounds like this could be a great opportunity to serve the employees, which was, Bill would have, certainly would have enjoyed, because he, he loved employees, and, you know, he, he related to them so well.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time, and we'll be in communication, so, as long as Mr. Vincent's still walking and kicking, we're all set, you know.
Yeah, make sure he's escorted out of the building.
We'll all be fine.
We got to get him out of the coffee shop now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, board members.
Let's go.
Going to buy me a drink now. Place closes at nine. Okay. Very good. Next is Joint Transportation Planning Group appointment from SERPED.
Yes, this is an annual SERPED appointment to the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Historically, it's been the DPW Director. Last year, you appointed Tim Barber with Paul Duarte as an alternate, and if you would like to do the same this year, you can do that, or if you would like.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Can I just make one comment about it? It's possible that Mr. Barber will be the new Director, and will, will that, given that, that appointment, will that be, will we have enough time to, to do this, this commitment at SERPED?
Previously, the DPW Director has been that person, but.
I just wanted to run that by everyone.
I'll ask him about that.
Well, yes, it does, but it's important.
There is an alternate that he can send.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Make a motion that we appoint Tim Barber and Paul Duarte as alternate to the Joint Transportation Planning Group of SERPED.
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none? Motion passes. Thank you. Next would be self-nomination to serve on Southeastern Mass MPO, which stands for?
Yes, this is the SERPED Committee responsible for development and review of transportation policies, priorities, and projects for the SERPED region. Last year, Mr. McDonald, previously, Mr. McDonald was on, his term expires, so the board would have to vote to recommend to have him appointed again.
I'd like to appoint Mr. McDonald to be reappointed.
I'm not going to accept. I, I don't have the time anymore.
Can you tell us a bit about?
As a result, as a result of.
Going on the payroll?
Nope, yeah, well, as a result of my sister's death, are, it's increasingly difficult to.
Upset.
And especially if it's Zoom, maybe, but going to Taunton's can't going to happen.
Can you tell us a bit about it, Sean?
I'll be honest with you. I mean, they go over, I mean, you meet with a myriad of people across the state, Mass Transportation, you know, and whatnot, and we go over projects as to what's coming in the line. Majority of it is really not germane to Dartmouth, but, I mean, it's an overall transportation throughout the entire area, but you get to see the effects. You know, maybe it's time for somebody from Westport to step up to, to do this. I think, actually, I, maybe I did replace somebody from Westport. Fairhaven finally has a representative on here. Kushner would be nice to, to get Rochester, no, they're different.
I'd like to make a suggestion here. I mean, I mean to bring this up, and I meant to do it with you, Sean, first, but I think that it's now come a time, at some point in time, maybe after town meeting, that we review whatever committees there are, responsibilities, what's available, and maybe re-assort them and take a look, rather than just do this on a random basis. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me.
Right. And whatever, can this thing wait?
You, you don't have to submit someone, you don't have to submit a self-nomination form, so.
Okay.
It's just, it's up to the board to decide if they, if they want to, if not.
It comes up annually.
It comes up annually.
Okay, correct. So at your discretion, Sean, we discuss when we want to bring that, the committee assignments or availabilities at some point?
Sure, we can do that, yes.
Is that all right? Okay, so we're going to table that one for now. Thanks for serving on it, Sean.
You're welcome.
Okay. Appointment to, of Select Board to Bristol County Advisory Board.
This one, this one we have to have a member. But I'll be honest with you, I've done it. I'm frustrated with the Bristol County Advisory Board completely. Even, even Mr. Haron has, was frustrated with this board. So if somebody wants to go in there and have a good fight with these guys, go right ahead, because.
Is that like being hit against the law?
When is the, is there a deadline for this?
As soon as possible, that's what they want.
Yes.
And Sean, do you know a little bit more about what they?
They go over the county budget. And pretty much, you know, I mean, there was, there was a point in time where I made a motion to cut the pay of the county commissioners. That went over like a lead balloon.
Hmm. I wonder why.
Yeah.
Sometimes even, just don't want to have trouble getting a quorum?
No.
That's the county commissioners.
Right, that's, yeah, no, but, no, the county commissioners have, have their, um, how can I say, have their minions appointed. So they're pretty much, you know, anybody favorable to the commissioners are kind of on this board. So Dartmouth has been in the position in the last six years of kind of being not in that.
The mojo group, yeah.
Yeah, not in that group. And it's generally the, the city's representatives seem to be more favorable to the county commissioners.
City of New Bedford, there's a lot of mojo there, yeah.
Well, I don't know about the city of New Bedford, but.
Is there a, as soon as possible, or is there a deadline on this one?
There's no deadline listed.
It says as soon as.
And when do, when do they meet? Monthly, or?
I don't know, they, they meet, they meet, they don't meet monthly. It's a random, it's like twice a year. Once for the, once for the budget, and then at some point in time, there's something that would.
Where do they meet?
Up in Taunton.
I would suggest, if we can, that we, we put this on hold as well?
Well, I'm looking at the, on here, and it looks like Mr. Haron was appointed maybe, or communicated August 5th, 2020.
or communicated August 5th, 2020. So maybe it was a two-year position, and they didn't hear about it until August. So I think we have a bit of time.
I would.
Unless there's a meeting coming up.
Can we find out more about the schedule at all, Sean, or?
Do that?
But I also, I'm, I might be wrong, but I think it's, it can be a select person or their appointee. So.
A little more reason to get a little more information if we could.
Yeah.
So we can send somebody like Cody.
That's right.
Or Greg, if we really want to be mean to Greg.
What about from the tax department?
Hey, Gary would be awesome, yeah. Some other finance guy.
Gary's not even smiling.
Okay, so that's.
Let them see the wonderful finances of the county government. Oh, I didn't say that.
Approval of budget line item transfers. Mr. Barnes.
You may recall that at the end of the year, we're able to do light item transfers. Keep in mind, we have a $115 million budget, so the amount of transfers is a very small proportion of the overall budget. So the way these work is they have to be voted by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee. One of them's already been voted by the Finance Committee. The other two, I plan on, if all goes well, we'll be voting them before town meeting on June 7th. The first one is for the MIS budget. They have some new software with maintenance contracts, plus the increase in the pre-existing maintenance contracts are going up well above inflation. Hence, we have a expense deficit. We're asking for $20,000. Do you want me to go through each one and vote them?
Vote them one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay. The second one is, we're given an estimate each year of what the Bristol County Agricultural School Assessment will be. The estimate they gave us was below cost. It, we need $5,339.88 to meet the cost. We had budgeted 153. As a way of disclosure, literally the day that we finalized the budget, we got some new numbers for fiscal '23. We've gone up from 18 to apparently they're now estimating 28 students. So we will have to go to town meeting in the fall to supplement the budget for 2023. That's going to be far more than $5,000. It's going to be 50, 60,000 or so.
Is that formula any more fair than the New Bedford vocational formula that we pay? In terms of how we pay per student?
Well, we pay, we pay a lot less than for Bristol Aggie, but there's a reason for that. Gets back to the county. The county performs basically three functions, four, if you want to call it that. Their number one function is Bristol Aggie. About 80%, 90% of their budget is Bristol Aggie. They do the registry of deeds, they do the Bristol, take care of the Bristol, the Superior Court, and they also have a print shop in New Bedford. That's about what they do. You hear Bristol County Retirement, not part of the county. You hear Bristol County Mosquito, not part of the county. You hear Bristol County Sheriff, not part of the county. So they do about four things. So a good portion of the assessment we pay each year goes towards subsidizing the tuition. I don't, can't tell you how much the overall tuition is, but it's about the same as Aggie, I'm sorry.
Vocational.
Greater New Bedford. But it's, it's paid for mainly through our assessment, and then they do a cost on the side. What's become a significant cost in recent times is debt service. We're spending about $153,000 per year now on debt service for Bristol Aggie because of all their upgrades in facilities. The last one, we have Bristol County Retirement, and again, not part of the county. They have a law, this is a state law, that if you have a person who goes on active military service, that we're responsible for paying the proportion of the pension that they normally would pay. We had an individual recently go on military service, when I say recent, a few years ago. They billed us this year for $9,356 involving that individual, because it's not normally part of the regular assessment. We did not know until we were billed. So those are the three, and what I'd need is a vote, and then the chair should sign the forms. One you have and already signed by Terry, and the other two you would sign first.
Mr. Chairman.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we transfer $20,000 to the R&amp;M computer equipment category and transferred from the unemployment expense.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we transfer $5,339.88 to the Bristol County Agricultural School Assessment from the unemployment expense account.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a transfer of $9,356.07 to the Bristol County Retirement Special Assessment from unemployment expense account.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Passed unanimously. Okay, thank you. Do you have the forms? Thank you, Greg. Next, Town Meeting Budget Statement Review, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so in your packet is the budget statement for FY '23 that will go into the town, that has gone into the Town Meeting Warrant Packet. This is a summary of the presentation that was given to the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and just articulating this year's budget, what some of the changes are, and going over just the budget process. So just wanted to include that in the packet for the board to review.
Questions?
Great presentation. It really is.
Comments? I have a question. We had a little brief discussion about it, but I think this is something that town meeting members should hear, and.
Well, that's the next.
That's the next item.
Does this be part of it at all?
This is the budget, this goes in the Town Meeting Warrant Packet. The next item is the State of the Town presentation.
Okay, well, okay, part of the material. Okay, then I'll hold my comment to that unless we can make it anyway. Go ahead.
Okay. So no, no vote is needed on that, just to update.
Yep.
Your commentation. The next item is the State of the Town Report. In your packet, there's a PowerPoint presentation that is a draft. As you've heard me mention many times, we have a internal budget team that we work together. It's myself, Mr. Barnes, Garrett Guerrero, our town collector, and Cody Hadad, Director of Development. We've collaborated to put together the State of the Town Report as requested by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. We'll be finalizing it this week, and DCTV will be recording the PowerPoint presentation so that we can run it for a week prior to town meeting for the town meeting reps to review.
Good idea.
Anybody have any comment? I guess I will, I, I think that the work, thank you, Mr. Guerrero, Mr. Hadad, Mr. Barnes. I think that, I think this is a critically important piece of information and a perspective that town meeting members are going to really not only embrace, but, but get a lot out of. And my concern is that we, they, you're given the kind of time to make a decent presentation live at town meeting. I don't know how you feel, what you've heard about that, or where you stand on that.
I think, you can see, a true State of the Town report takes some time to give. There's a number of slides in here that have a lot of information that's very informative. It would be tough to give at town meeting in a, in a short period of time.
When, when DCTV is taping this, will the slide be shown and a voice be talking through this?
Yes.
Okay. I think that would be.
They direct, I'm not sure they're going to do it, but that's.
Right, but I mean, there will be a voice. It won't just be slides. You'll be talking through.
Oh, correct, yes. There's a, there's a lot to talk about in the slides.
Because when we saw this, when we had that joint meeting with Finc, there was a lot of information.
Yes.
And I think even if the day of our town meeting, if, if this presentation could be on a screen in the hallway as we're gathering, I think that would be helpful. People will have had an opportunity to see it on DCTV, and that day, anytime they step out, if this presentation is just continuing to roll.
In the timeframe, again, on this, that DCTV would be publishing it?
Thursday, we're going to record it, so, you know, we'll review it. So by Tuesday of the following, Monday, you know.
It'll be up all the time.
Yes.
And where, excuse me, go ahead.
For anyone to.
To view, yes.
To view.
Correct.
And your, your approach to town meeting in terms of time and effort and presentation, how do you feel about it? And what do you intend to do or?
We intend to have it available to town meeting reps and notify them. We'll have it through our website, through social media, through our engagement portal, and then we can run through these slides at town meeting. So people can, you know, there's a fair amount of information on this, the slides alone. So I think it would be informative, even if they don't hear a voice, they can see the slides go through. So I think that'll be good to run through town meeting. And we'll also provide the slides from our lines.
And your intention to verbalize it yourself and talk about it is, you know, things, you're going to do it or not necessary?
On the record, yes. So we're going, that's what we're going to record. Oh, at town meeting?
Yes, yes, at town meeting.
No, we're not, we're not going to run it. It would just, there's not enough time to really provide enough information.
Well, I personally think that attaching a human voice and a, and a little information, even if it's a two-minute mention, I think is important because it's something they haven't seen before, and it's worth notating at town meeting. Now, maybe you disagree or not, but in some form, and men of the two, something privileged, I think is important.
Okay, I can talk to the moderator.
I'm just wondering, though, if, while we're gathering again, if it can be on the screen, most people are mulling through.
As we're walking in.
We're walking in. It can be out in the hall, on a, on a TV out there, but on the big screen as we're walking in. I mean, it usually takes about a half hour or so for people to mull in and make sure we have a quorum and all of that. If it can be just running and people can.
But the only problem there is they'll only get tidbits of it. You know what I mean? It's.
Yeah.
You really need to, needs to focus on, you know, the whole presentation.
If it's okay with the group, I'd like to personally write to the moderator and ask that, that Sean be given a minimal amount of time to just make a, make a mention in some form that you think is productive. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right then. Thank you. Native American Education Committee Discussion.
Yes, this came up at the joint meeting with the school committee about forming a committee for Native American education. The school, just giving an update, the school committee is going to meet on June 6th to discuss this, forming the committee, creating a committee charge, and they will come back and notify the Select Board of Membership.
Great idea.
Comments?
Great idea.
Yeah, let's, let's see it.
Well.
The school department is going to create the structure of the committee?
Well, that's what they're, that's what they're saying, but I think that, in my view, at our joint meeting, we proposed, you know, some kind of a collaborative, but of committee. And, but certainly with a caveat that the school committee, it's their program, it's their protocol, they're in charge of it. But I think, personally, I think we ought to be a little bit more aggressive in, in coming up with our own idea, or what the composition might be, or its purpose, so that when they do meet, they, it's not coming from them, but they get some input from us. I think this is precedent setting in terms of, and I fully understand that this is a school committee decision, it was their vote, but it's also a town-wide issue. And I think, my personal opinion, over the last 20 years, this thing took a life on its own because it wasn't a town, a town-wide issue. And I think that it's about time we make sure that it is. And I'm not saying they won't do that, but I think it'd be beneficial to make sure that they have an idea where we stand on it as a group.
I agree, Dave.
Let's see what they come up as far as, you know, what the committee is, and we can always comment on, on the charge and the makeup of the committee.
Is there any thirst here to come up with a recommendation of the, of what we think the component of the committee could be?
I think we already told them that, didn't we, at the meeting?
It was unofficial. Unofficial. And we didn't vote on it. It was, we had ideas going back and forth.
Well, I mean, as, as chairman of this board, you are more than welcome to contact the chairman of that board and let the feelings know to him.
I don't know, I can't represent this committee without a discussion.
Well, you want us to give you, you don't need the authority.
You have my blessing to talk to the Chairman Nunes regarding this committee and how the makeup should be and where it should go. I don't have any issues with you contacting him as chair of this board. That's from me, one member.
I don't either.
That's two members.
Let's see.
I'll say three members. I think it would be helpful for Mr. Nunes to know that we want this to be broader, because it's not, it's the education, but we also have to talk about the non-school-related leagues using that image or not using that image. It's more, it, it's a school issue when we're talking about the education, but the logo has been used beyond the school, and we need to talk about that.
Yep. I personally think that the historical significance of the town and the 300 years of the 350 years this town, identifying it and making sure that it's part of the curriculum, et cetera, is really important. My overall goal has been from day one, that if we don't do all those things, then we're no better than the Washington Redskins.
Yeah.
And I think that, I feel very strongly about it, and that's my, that's what I'm going to voice. Now, within that, I completely understand, this is a school committee-driven decision-making process. But to make it a town-wide issue, I think they need to know where we kind of stand on it. Okay?
Yeah.
Except, I graciously accept your.
Make sure he understands your.
Just, just, just as a quick reminder, though, this logo issue hasn't been around for 350 years. This has only been since 1974.
No, but the Indian historical.
The aspect of, of, yes, the Native Americans, yes, clearly, that history is.
And that's a town issue.
Way before, yes. Right.
Okay. And I think, I would like to see, engage the Historical Commission in some form. But, okay.
Well, and I, I agree, because if we're talking about putting up kiosses somewhere so that they, we want people to learn about, then we have to have input as to where would it be appropriate and what information would be appropriate for those kiosses.
But I, I think it's critically important they understand what our role is. And it's not about the logo and the use in the schools. That is completely out of our purview. And they need to know that. And I think they do, but be emphasized. But thank you. Appreciate you.
But our membership on the committee would support and ensure that that education takes place.
Okay. Any else? Thank you very much. Okay, here's an interesting subject coming up.
Yeah.
The Payton Narum Bridge, public fishing resumption review.
Yes, as you may recall, at a last month's meeting, the topic of resuming fishing on the Payton Narum Bridge came up. The board wanted more information to reevaluate at this meeting. In the packet, I solicited recommendations from the harbor master, the DPW director, and the parking rec director as to how best to manage fishing on the bridge. In the packet, you can see that the bridge tender is responsible for maintaining the cleanliness of the bridge, which I don't believe would be an issue. I think it's fishing off of the causeway. It would be, could be difficult for the bridge tender to maintain that. It's, it's a large piece of causeway. And the police could do enforcement, but they're not out there all the time. So it just gets to be, you know, I, I think you're going to rely on people to, we can put some signage up that they should be cleaning up after themselves, and we can do monitor during business hours and, and weekends, but at, at night, I know there's a fair amount of fishing. It would be difficult to keep it clean if the fisher, fisher, the fishermen.
Fisher people.
Fisher people. It's getting late. The fishermen aren't, aren't keeping it clean themselves.
Well, I mean, basically, we can, we can open it up and put up the signs. Well, I mean, basically, we can, we can open it up and put up the signs that say, you know, clean up after yourself, and if there's misuse, shut it down again. Also, also more to get the fishing pier project up and running somewhere down the line, see if we can get money for that. That way, we can stop fishing.
Move them down, move them down the road.
Move them down to the fishing pier.
So, you can see that no one has the stomach for this, not the DPW, not the parks and rec, and not for sure the harbor master. No one has the stomach to do this. No one's gonna be out there policing this, and who's gonna give up a hundred, who's gonna give them a hundred dollar fine? Who's gonna have the authority to do it?
I think we need to be careful here because of, these, these letters are part of our notes, but the public doesn't know what we're even talking about here, so we need to be a little more explicit about what the.
Well, I'm not gonna read all of what they said, because it's too.
But there was one suggestion to, to post, to charge a hundred dollar fine.
Right, okay, that's my point, a hundred dollar fine. Who's gonna initiate the fine? And how are they gonna do it?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have the harbor, the, the bridge tender run out there and give him a hundred dollar fine? He can't do that.
Well, I did appreciate that Mr. Barber had wording for a sign, please help maintain the beauty of our harbor. I thought that was.
Yeah, me too.
That was nice. I do, I hear what Mr. Yenna said earlier about when you have trash, who takes care of it? But in the job description, it does say that the, the bridge tender is responsible for.
Just the bridge real estate.
Just the bridge.
Not the causeway, just the bridge real estate.
Just the bridge real estate.
Which is small, yeah.
And do we, I mean, is there a hose available there? No, I have never seen one.
No, I don't believe so.
And that would, that may be helpful in and of itself to have a hose that they could.
Somebody might misuse, misuse the hose.
Absolutely.
The kids might do something, the hose.
Bucket in a string.
Yeah.
I, I would also say to you that it's illegal to fish on the bridge itself.
Yes.
So that, in, in reality, the cleanup should only be on the causeway, which is.
Right, not his.
We've been told that that's too big and it can't be maintained, so.
Right.
So, but, but the area for, for cutting the, the, the fish is on the bridge, not on the causeway. So we get a little, we have a little stand there and they're cutting the fish up.
Right.
And all the guts and everything, whatever in the world, ends up in the water, what, what it should do, but half of it ends up on, on, on the street. The, the people that are, are walking the bridge and more and more people are walking that bridge, they're gonna be slipping and sliding all over the gurry and all the other stuff that, that the fishermen left behind. It's, as I said the first time, it's not a good idea.
But until we do have that pier and have a designated spot for them to do it. I mean, even though we said, I think in our last meeting, we said that they could start doing it May 26th, I believe was the date. They were there this weekend, and they've been there longer.
There, there are other parts of this area to go fishing, not only the, the Payden Aaron Bridge.
Right, they're also fishing off of Little River Bridge and.
This is not the only act in town. They can surf cast off a, upon a ganset in that, that back area, there's lots of water on that side of the bridge to surf cast and catch all the fish they want and not put anybody.
And I have seen some people fishing off of Shore Road or Smith Network.
And not have the, the residents put in jeopardy.
I, I would say, I was initially concerned that the reason why we stopped was because of COVID, not because of all these issues.
Right.
And that really wasn't fair. And I, since our last discussion, I've gotten many calls about why fishing wouldn't work there. It's not safe, it's not clean, walkers are in jeopardy, either they get hooked in the face or they get run over by a car. Now, it hasn't happened yet, but we have a whole assortment of unenforceable rules or non-posted rules right now.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, even legally, could be mult, you know, liable for some of these issues. But clearly, we, there's no entity in town to enforce any of these rules. And there's even no sign that say what the rules are. Keep the place clean, be aware of pedestrians, clean up after yourself. We could put those signs up, but what's that gonna do to enforce the fact that, first of all, with the new causeway, I bet the walking is up 50% more than it was four and five years ago? Especially with COVID where people were walking.
With COVID, it was, yeah.
I'm, 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 I, my initial feeling was that it's not fair to keep it closed to fishing, because it's been there since I can ever recall, longer. But is it reality now, and, you know, if we could have that pier, it'd be fantastic solution, but Cody, how far away is that pier gonna be from us?
Right away, it's, we're still exploring that.
It's in its infancy.
It is.
Is that we may get the train first before the fishing pier.
And that might not happen.
And, and Sean, I completely appreciate what you're saying is, it's always been there, people should be able to fish there. And I, and I, frankly, I'm, I'm caught in between, because it's unsafe, it's dirty, it's unenforceable. Nobody in town wants to take charge because they, they don't really have the authority, and what do we do?
Punt.
I don't think, I don't think it's, the problem is, is that nobody has the stones to, to do something about it, so.
Well, first of all, we don't have real rules that posted.
Well, that's just it.
Yeah, and then second, who's gonna enforce it?
So, I mean, so, let's, let's get rules posted.
Okay.
Let's get rules posted, you know?
I, I say we put signs at either end of the causeway and put a couple, two or three along the bridge, put them up, be as simple and understanding.
Be the same thing, should be, should say the same thing.
Right, it, it sounds the same. And then within, within three to four weeks, we have, we meet about it again and talk about it, and that the rules are completely out of control. But who do we sign to empty the trash?
In order to, in order to have a violation or a fine attached to it, it has to be approved by town meeting, too.
Yeah.
So, because it, unless we already have it in our code, in our general bylaws or general, or code or whatever, unless it's already there.
Who's gonna play, enforce that hundred dollars?
It's a good question, but usually, well, let's put it this way, police usually respond to a complaint.
Right. I was thinking if the complaint comes in from the bridge tender or anyone passing by, the police would need to respond.
And, I mean, it, I mean, it, there has to be, I mean, and that would be when a, there is an officer available. So chances are, maybe that, that, that violation won't exist when, by that time, or, you know.
Bodies have exited the.
It's just, it, there's, you know, you, you wanna say there's no ownership, but, you know, to be honest with you, nobody's really tackled this.
No.
You know, they've just kinda kicked the can down the road and just, you know, okay, well, well, we'll take care of it. I mean, COVID just gave the town a great excuse to shut it down.
Yeah.
It gave it a great excuse, but nothing hap, excuse me, nothing happened in order to open it back up. We can no longer use COVID as an excuse to shut it down. So the excuse is going to be, we're going to allow it to happen with, with consequences, or we're just not going to allow it happen because of past abuses.
Any words, or was it Mr. McGinnis?
You know, it's been going on for a very long time, it's been, people have been fishing there for years and years. I think the approach that the board has discussed about putting up some signage and revisiting in a month would be a good course of action just to see if it's effective. And then moving forward, if it's not effective, then you can look at methods to implement.
At this point in time, there's many more walkers on the bridge than there are fishermen, many more. Couldn't say that 10 years ago, but I think that's the case, I, I don't know if I disagree with that or not, that, so.
So, what are the rules, what are the rules, what will they be? This needs to be short and sweet. You can't have 15 and 16 items.
Nope.
Needs to be short and sweet, because they're not gonna read it.
Yeah.
And, and, and do we post, there's a hundred dollar fine for anyone caught misusing the bridge?
I don't know if legally we can do that.
I don't know that, but then you, then you can't, then you can't give them a hundred dollar fine then.
You can always add it. You can always add it.
They should be, they should be warned. You cannot indiscriminately give them a hundred dollar fine without a warning on a sign. It's like, no hunting here. Well, that, you just can't do it.
You can always add the fine if a fine needs to be created. You can say, fishing is allowed from this, you know, from here to there, you can put that in there. Clean up after yourself, no gutting of fish on rails. Failure to adhere to these rules will result in closure. It's pretty simple, you know? This is where you can fish, take care of it, or you lose it.
Well, we could do like the feds do, we could confiscate whatever they cut.
Ah, no, I'm not interested in that.
I'm kidding.
Well, if we're going to say not to clean or gut, then we would need to remove those trays that are there.
Yeah, and first of all, they're unsanitary anyway, because nobody washes them.
What are you supposed to do with the fish?
Put them in a bucket.
Put them in a bucket.
And bring them home and clean them.
Cleaning a fish?
Clean them at home.
Let me ask a question, if, if you go fishing on a boat, what do you do with your fish?
Right in the bucket.
Right, there you go.
Well, if you got them on the fish, you throw, you just throw that stuff over the side.
I think that we need to do this right away, because people are gonna, fishing already and.
Would it be appropriate to paint, I'm thinking of that first line, fishing is allowed between, can we say something like the blue lines and paint lines on the causeway piece here to here, that's where we're fishing?
No fishing beyond this line?
Yeah, whatever, you know, you could put a.
One time there was, there were signs up about not fishing on the bridge.
Right.
There were.
Right.
And there was even fences and stuff up there. As a kid, I didn't understand that, so I dropped the line over, under the bridge, a boat came by, within three minutes, I lost everything.
You have no line.
Nothing, so.
Well, my father would let us fish with baloney, which no fish ever came, which was exactly his point.
Well, we'll be back again shortly, I'm sure.
Right, so I think fishing, if we say that, that we wanna put some lines down, which is something DPW could do for us, to, to designate the area that the fishing people can stand in, have somebody remove those tables so that there's no gutting or cleaning on premises.
What do you think, Sean?
I don't think we can limit the hours, in all honesty, because people are gonna be there.
I think the most important, they'd get signs up right away, that's the most, because they're out fishing now.
Do that, the trade.
All we're gonna do is get out of control, okay?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on anything on this?
Who's gonna put, the DPW's gonna put the signs up? They're gonna be.
I'll work, I'll, yes. We'll have the signs installed someday. Not sure who, but I'll make sure they're up.
Yep.
Do you think we need anything more than the two items I just said?
I have remove the cleaning trays, mark the locations where fishing allow, is allowed, install signs with brief rules, telling people to clean up after themselves and remove their trash. Failure to follow the rules could result in reclosure of the area for fishing.
Well, the other thing is being aware of pedestrians. And I know that's.
Can add that too?
Yeah, yeah, well, that, that should be near the top, too.
Yeah.
Yep, be aware of.
And I know that's a lot on the sign already, but.
Just lost it.
Okay, okay. I think we beat that one up pretty good, so we can move on, anything else?
Five points.
Thank you. Next, purchase and sales agreement for 245 Russell Mills Road.
Yes, previously, the board voted and signed this purchase and sale agreement, this is the property behind DCTV that ties in the parcels. The buyer's attorney, after reviewing the purchase and sale, after the facts, realized his, he did not include his information in there for the contact, so he was adamant that he wanted his information on the purchase and sale, so we said we would bring it back before the board to have them revote and sign, lawyers.
Motion to approve the $290,000.
A new document.
If, for the, a new document for the same, at 245 Russell's Mills Road.
Call it the amended purchase and sale.
Yeah, amended, but that doesn't say that, that doesn't say that yet, but.
Okay, second I had, any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously. We'll have that.
Coming.
Coming, okay. Next would be the stipend approval, payroll administrator and director of development, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, these are two stipends that were approved previously by the board in executive session due to an oversight. They were not included in open session, so the board would need to vote for them in open session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously. Update on select board meeting schedule.
Yes, in your packet is the meetings, proposed meeting schedule through the end of this calendar year. I've indicated the dates that are holidays. One item that came up was June 20th is now a holiday, Juneteenth is a state and federally recognized holiday. This year falls on Sunday, but is required by the statute to be observed on the following Monday, which is the 20th.
So we have to pick another date?
So, in your packet, the dates in black would be the dates that were proposed, the ones in red are just holidays or other.
I have a, one other before we decide, well, June, I guess we can do separately, yeah.
13th is good, obviously, so Ju, we have to come up with something for June 20th, right?
Can we have?
We have the 6th and the 13th.
Well, let me ask this question. As part of our succession plan, should we try out a individual to kinda step in for one meeting and make the presentations that need to be made for that day?
On the 27th?
Yes.
I think that's totally appropriate.
I think so, too. And I think we'd be, kinda test the metal and see what it's like. But the only, the, the main reason why.
And it can have a limited.
The main reason is, is basically, you're looking at, if, if you don't hold a meeting on the holiday, you don't hold a meeting on the time when the town administrator is out for vacation, you don't hold the meeting on July 4th, you're going a month without, and, you know, I jones for these meetings every two weeks, so, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think it'd be appropriate to take a month off, but I think we can handle.
Plenty to discuss.
Right.
June, June 27th.
With today's technology, you know, the phone call, the emails and whatnot sent from the town administrator to the person who will be sitting in his stead for that meeting would be, you know, very appropriate, and I think that would be very easy to do.
So we, we're gonna do the June?
June 27th.
Adding June 27th.
Instead of the 20th.
Right.
Night.
Can't do the 20th, it's a holiday.
It's, it's, yeah, it's out, and so we're doing the 27th.
Can't do the 20th.
I said instead of the 20th.
No, you'd be going two weeks, you'd still maintain your two-week schedule from the 13th to the 27th to the 11th, yeah.
Sounds good. All right.
So you're saying not on the 6th, not on June 6th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we still have June 6th.
6, 13, and 27.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the, that's the night before.
You could not do the 13th, you could do just the 6th and the 27th, because you usually do two a month.
We can do that, too, if you want.
You wanna take out June 13th then, right?
I have no problem.
Whatever we set up, we're gonna get it all.
Our June.
Well, we should meet before town meeting.
June 6th.
Yes, I think we need to have it.
Should meet before town meeting, so there's no doubt about it.
And I think, keep the 13th, because there may be something that we need to do while Sean is here.
Right, even if it's a short meeting, we've done short meetings before, so.
So we're not gonna do June 27th then?
Yes, we are.
You're gonna have three meetings.
No, we are doing June 27th.
We're gonna have three.
We'll have three.
Okay.
Three schedules.
All right.
That's because I like seeing you standing.
We, we've done that, and I appreciate that very much.
June 6, 20, and 27.
Right.
No, June 6, 13.
I do wanna look.
6, 13, and the 27th.
20 and 27, so you have four, 6, you'll send it all to us, so.
All right, what about, if we can look ahead?
Yeah, I need a couple of those.
We have, we got.
In October, we cannot meet Columbus Day because it's a holiday, so we have the 17th and the 31st, which is fine. My, um, looking at November, we have just the one in November, Halloween, can we dress up for Halloween?
Yeah, why not? I'm gonna dress up like Cody.
I'm gonna dress up like you.
Can we put, add November 28?
Hang on, I gotta go back to September.
Sorry, back to September.
26th, David.
We have a, my, my calendar went page change.
26th is the, David.
It went out of nowhere, usually it's on one page altogether, disappeared.
September 26th.
Yeah, September 26th is the date, that is the, the Jewish New Year, and if possible, we would like to not meet on the 26th.
Yes.
It's the first, first night, very important night.
Yeah.
So let's, can we meet on the 27th, a Tuesday?
Well, the other is, right now, we're meeting. Yeah, really, we're meeting on the.
12th.
12th.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and we can't meet on the fifth, because that's Labor Day. So, do we wanna meet on the nineteenth, which is back-to-back?
We could do that.
And then we would go to the tenth.
The tenth is Columbus Day.
No, we can't.
If we do back-to-back September, we can meet on Oc, October third.
Yes.
So, wait a minute, so you've got seventeen and thirty-one in October, you wanna take one of those out, then? If you're gonna meet on the third?
Well...
No, I think we can add the third, because that's every other week.
Yeah, it will be, it will be...
And we have a, we have a town meeting on the eighteenth, so...
So, we are, you know, at some point in time, we are going to hit a month that will have, you know, five Mondays in it.
Even though it's three meetings in October, it's still every two weeks.
Right, it's still every two weeks.
Right.
We do the third.
Right, and we can come up dressed on, uh, Halloween.
No question.
Perfect, yeah, everybody dressed like me.
So, September twelfth, September nineteenth, and October third.
Three, seventeen, and thirty-one, right.
Right.
All right.
Thank you for that accommodation.
And then in November, should we add, we have just one on the fourteenth, should we add the twenty-eighth?
Four, twenty-eighth, the twelfth, yeah, so the only problem with that is, well...
I, I won't be here.
Oh, we'll definitely meet on the twenty-eighth, then.
Whatever, yeah, yeah, good, no problem.
No, um, I mean, we can meet on the, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, and then, um...
Let me see.
Skip the, we could skip the fifth and go to the twelfth and the nineteenth?
I am not...
Nineteenth's not good.
I'm not here on the twelfth or nineteenth, that's fine, but we don't wanna make sure all the people are...
Nineteenth's is kinda late.
Well, that's, that's the first day of Hanukkah, right?
Uh, that's okay, that's not a...
That's okay, okay. Well, you got eight days anyways, so...
It's not a, it's not a, that type of a holiday, it's not a solemn holiday.
That's why they call it the high holidays, yeah.
Right, okay.
I think we need to meet before the nineteenth, if we're, nineteenth thereafter is too late in, in the month.
Well, then let's just go fifth and twelfth, that's the case.
Be okay with me.
October.
So, you would meet some, you'd meet for three weeks in a row, so, November twenty-eighth, December fifth, December twelfth.
That seems like a lot, huh?
Well, what do we get?
But they either could be, there could be a lot going on.
Maybe put it on the schedule, we can always, uh...
Yeah, we can always take a look at it, yeah.
Of those three?
Sure.
And then we can, then, then you can, the next meeting would be January second, anyway, so, because, you know...
But can we do this January second?
Well, 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 New Year's Day isn't moved over. That's not like one of those weekend holidays, you move it to Monday or something.
Some people might be away.
In some, in some departments, it is.
Well, also the school department, the schools will be off that week?
Yeah, but the school department, you're off the whole, yeah, but the school department, you're off for that whole...
That first week in Jan...
December, but if possible, we're not in on Monday, the second.
Not in school on the second, usually you come back that Wednesday.
That first week in January is very difficult to have a meeting, I think. I, I don't know if we should have it in the first week, second week of January, maybe.
The ninth and the twenty-third.
Don't forget, January sixteenth is...
I tried to have plans, because he's always... Ninth and the twenty-third. I think January second's...
That first week is very difficult.
I mean, keep it fluid, I mean, well, we're doing this six months ahead of time, so... It's not like it's written in stone, the one that's written in stone is the next meeting.
Very good, the only, only one that matters is the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, the good collaboration, yeah. Okay, next.
All business.
All business, uh, COVID, no new updates, plus corner, no new updates, I'd like, no, no new updates. I have just one question on COVID, um, in terms of, it's still, at this point, it's a very, um, evolving issue. And things could change quickly, or maybe not so quickly, but I think that whatever happens, I think this board, going forward, has to show, stay ahead of it, has to make some decisions, and then hopefully have the same, have an influence on how the rest of the, um, the town hall meets and how we meet meetings, because I think we need to stay ahead of it.
Based upon the best information available from all department heads.
Exactly, and, um, and we'll make decisions, but we'll do them as quick, as upfront as possible, based on the information we have and the experts', uh, opinions, which we have many in town. Okay.
That's for sure.
I meant that. Starting with, uh, border health and Mr. McGinnis. Okay.
Minutes. Minutes.
Oh, you want, all set there?
Not done.
Okay, minutes from April twenty-fifth and May ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the minutes of April twenty-fifth and May ninth to read that the select board members present is David Tattelbaum Chair, Stanley Mickelson Vice Chair, Heidi Silver Brooks, Sean McDonald, and Frank Gracie via Zoom.
On both?
On both.
Déjà vu. Motion approved as amended.
Second.
Seconded as amended.
I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
Okay, second.
Any comments on that, other? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the motion, we approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth and May ninth as amended.
Second.
Questions, none, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, I, and then the motion passes unanimously. Any questions or comments or announcements?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman.
Right ahead.
Uh, was curious as to when we are going to see the, um, RFQ, RF, whatever the, or the...
Yeah, I hope we have it for this meeting, but we're working on the state of the town, so you will have it in June.
What is, what is the secret request?
No, it was, probably, no secret request.
No, you didn't finish what you were saying.
You said secret.
We don't have any secrets.
Well, you didn't finish them, I thought it was deliberate.
No, 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 Mr. McGinnis, I saw Mr. McGinnis, and I knew exactly what he was gonna say. So, I'm just wanting to know when we are going to see the RFQ for the thirty-year lease for the McBride parcel. No, I didn't get it finished, because he was, he was smiling, so I knew what he was gonna say. June twenty-third, thank you.
Yeah, excellent, very important.
I apologize, it's, we're trying to get it done.
No, trust me, I understand, there are things that come up, I see it all the time, I just wanted to get, you know...
Mr. Tattelbaum, I have a few announcements.
Well, you are ready to go, so...
All right, just wanna remind everyone that the La Gua experience at the Southworth Library is still going till this Thursday, so there's still some time to see that. And also, we're, we're entering, you know, the, the exciting time of the school year. This weekend, um, our seniors will be invited, those receiving scholarships from the Dartmouth High School Alumni Association will be invited on Sunday, May twenty-ninth at two PM to the lawn at the current high school. It will be the hundredth and fiftieth graduating class this year, twenty twenty-two. Our first graduating class of eighteen seventy-two, um, was a small in number and had no physical building. This year, we're, the Alumni Association is awarding twenty-one scholarships for a total of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which is very nice.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, very nice, so thank you to all the former graduates who continue to contribute.
School in eighteen seventy-two?
No, no physical building.
Where did you, sit outside, or what'd you do?
Original homeschooling.
They used another, they used another building.
Really?
They used, it wasn't designated as a high school, it was a school building, but it was still, it wasn't...
Ask Stanley, he was there.
I was waiting, I knew somebody was gonna...
No, I already asked him if he was part of that graduation.
Sean already asked me, didn't, he didn't...
No, Sean, yeah.
Screaming out like you did, Frank.
No, Stan was in New Bedford, so no, he has no memory of what happened.
Well, they kicked me out there, they said...
He knew that one, he knew Herman, he knew Herman Melville personally, so...
Oh, my, all right, so also, just, um, for those of you interested to catch on DCTV, the Dartmouth High School seniors will be taking a stroll through the middle school and the elementary schools on Wednesday, June first, this is something they've done for the last couple of years, the seniors, after they practice for graduation, board buses and then go back to the schools that they went to and get to say hi to their former teachers, and it's something for the younger kids to look up to, it's actually fun.
And to make the teachers feel old.
Very old, um, that night will be the awards night at the high school, where they will present additional awards and scholarships. Thursday, June first, if we could all say a silent prayer, will be the prom and the after-prom, so it should all go well. And then on Sunday, June fifth, at one o'clock, the high school seniors will graduate, which is early in June.
And we have Voak, um, Voak's prom is this Thursday night.
This Thursday night, and...
And I believe their graduation is the following Friday.
Oh, the following Friday, yes, you have a senior.
Yes, I have a granddaughter graduating from...
Granddaughter senior, so very exciting time for the schools in our area, and let's hope they all keep their heads on straight. I also wanna just mention, because we've talked about mental health, the school department, and you can get this information on the school department website, is, um, conducting a mental health series, social media, protecting your children by staying aware and involved. And that's gonna be June seventh, um, two thousand twenty-two, from six to seven PM via Zoom. And on the school department website, you can register to be a part of it. And one other one, because we do know that our families are struggling, we have a coaching for parents, need help with parenting, our coaches will guide you through your parenting questions. Again, this is on the website, it's free parent coaching, it includes weekly calls, twenty-four-seven texting with, within a twenty-four-hour response, guided, step-by-step resources, tools and tips for parents, and it's all confidential.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, dear.
I think that you've managed to do something new for us, which is to do two things simultaneously. One is to keep perspective of school activities presented at this meeting, which is a different population, but also maintaining objectivity when it comes to being a select board member. Thank you.
Thank you, I hope to bring some more, I'm gonna, you know, look into other departments to see...
Keep it coming.
The other thing is, just as a progress, um, I don't know if anybody's been up and down Route Six, but the progress on the sidewalks.
Looks good.
They're doing a great job, um, it looks absolutely fantastic. Some of the sidewalks are already in, um, they've poured the corners at, um, Reed Road and, um, Route Six. Some, and I believe they've, um, they're using asphalt as a, um, a component, and that's already down on some.
Are there any shopping carts being buried in the cement?
What's that?
Any shopping carts being buried in the asphalt?
No, no, not yet, um, and the other thing is, and I wanna give a shout-out to, um, the Southeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Coalition and the Dartmouth Police and, um, the surrounding teams for their, um, dangerous but yet tactful, um, work on yesterday's, um, situation. I was on my way grocery shopping when a undercover, um, officer came by behind my car. I pulled over, he went by, but I did not recognize him, did not recognize the car. So, I just figured he was going, he went into Target, so I was like, okay, maybe something's happening at Target. And then I noticed a sheriff's department vehicle with its lights on, first time I've ever seen that, which kinda triggered to me that this is something a little bit more, uh, involved, and I believe this is probably, um, Simlax', uh, call. You know, as soon as I said that, uh, saw a police officer from Taunton, saw one from West Wichbrata. Uh, so, I saw where they were, was able to, um, avoid the area, but yet I was able to speak to, um, Chief Leveque onsite, and he just kinda let me know what was going on, um, and, uh, I'm glad the situation was taken care of without anybody getting harmed, including, uh, the person that they were interested in, so... Good job overall on that, um, and I know somebody had said, you know, I guess this is no longer a sleepy little town, it never has been a sleepy little town, town, our town problems are just as equal to somebody else's, and including the big cities, so... But good job overall, guys. And our two officers that we, um, acknowledge for their, uh...
Bravery.
For their bravery in, in the, um, Lake Nokochoke, uh, situation back in April, were honored by the Boston Celtics at their game on, uh, that they lost on Saturday. But the, um, the Celtics and the...
Highlight was our officers being honored.
Um, our officers were honored by the team, uh, along with other heroes of the Commonwealth during, during that time, so...
Nice.
It was nice.
And speaking of Celtics, I guess it's, uh, just...
Tonight.
Tip-off in five minutes.
Yeah. No, they won five minutes, that'll be wild, okay. Very productive and, um, very, um, uh, a sharing meeting in many, many ways, every way, so... I need a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor to, um, to close the meeting, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none, the meeting is officially adjourned, thank you very much.